The last few days.
I saw that.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
It was like the big bang episode.
Yeah.
Oh, funny.
I can't think of his name.
Small world.
Well, funny enough, I knew his mom.
Oh, really?
That's yeah, and so Jordan went in there and said, oh, my, we knew your mom. And that's how they started talking. They've known each other like for years now. I mean, that was back when I was outpaced Quincy. Mm hmm. That was a long time ago. Yeah.
Yeah.
He loves like his boss, he loves.
How often is he?
Well, I mean, during summer.
Oh, okay.
But during school, he works Tuesday, Thursday morning, he goes in in the morning. And then he leaves, I think, at eleven thirty again to school. And then he does their classes on Friday, so he works on Monday Friday. And then he works every other Saturday.
Yeah. Is he a senior?
Yeah. That's crazy that. Yeah, it's very quick.
That was cool. We didn't run into school.
She is. She should, as you've said, she shouldn't be, but because I think she thinks she has something to prove. Like, I think it's this whole thing that kids want to try.
She's miserable. Would she be happy somewhere else? You think it's just a place?
No, I think that.
I, oh, it's, I have her car.
Then, forget it.
Yeah.
She is thinking maybe she'll take a semester.
Right, my nice motherfucking.
Yeah.
You stop me. Exactly. I'll watch you.
And you get all this time, you know, there's no pressure.
Hi. I just asked him to say hi so I could tell.
Karen, are you ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, we got six o'clock, so we'll start it up. More of North School Committee meeting for Thursday, September twenty third. This meeting is being recorded. If anybody else is recording, please let us know right now. First up, we're going to have these pledge releases. I was off to my left. I pledge a thesis. United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on the agenda is the vote to approve the minutes from August twenty sixth and September ninth open meetings. Did anybody have a chance to take a look at those? Yes. Okay, anybody have a correction? No, okay, I do have one correction. And we can, we can go without the correction if you want to know. On the September ninth minutes. On the last page, the vote to revise the base mass policy. I did not make the motion to, to change it. I entertain a motion and somebody did make a motion. They don't care if we don't correct that.
Yeah, I can go back and.
If you don't have it, let's just, let's just pass this. All right, so nobody has any corrections on it. All right, so. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve both the Thursday, August twenty sixth and Thursday, September ninth open meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, we're going to roll. Yes. All those in favor of Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
And me, Mr. Sabas, yes. All right. Next up, we have warrants. And Kathleen, that's you.
So I reviewed and signed the following warrants. Two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety one dollars and fifty cents. One hundred and sixty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and sixty seven cents. And one million eighty nine thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty five cents. I wish to put this in direct.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the student representative updates. Zoe, Emily, how are you?
Hi, so we have kind of a different thing today. We have some leftover updates from the last meeting because Dr. Marcus was, he sent them in a few days ago. So we have some new updates, just on like the first day of school. And then Zoe's going to go through kind of a general like stuff that's been going on at the other schools, stuff that's going on at the high schools, stuff like that. I'm going to start with the stuff that Dr. Marcus gave us. So he said from a third grader, if the goal is for me to like school, the goal has been exceeded. A kindergartner said, I had my favorite best first day today. A third grader said, I was nervous at first, but then I was excited. A second grader, Dr. Marcus is a pineapple. He stands tall, wears a crown and is sweet on the inside. And he said lots of thumbs up at parent pickup every day. So great to see kids happy and having had good days all around. So it sounds like start of a JCS has been a success and the principles of pineapple, which is good to hear. I think Zoe's going to take over for the next part.
Um, yeah, it's been pretty positive all around with all the other schools. Looked at some of the Instagrams and the Twitter accounts just to see some events. So high school senior cruise last night, that was really fun. I had fun. So also at the high school, student council is working to try to fix some traffic problems and maybe some LLB problems that students have been talking about. Picture Day has been happening, middle school, high school, and some cool, some schools are still going to have theirs later on. Meet the teachers night, all the, all of our teachers have been saying that it was fun meeting our parents, which might have been a little scary. And the yell, they're doing the good news call of the day still, so they're, all the kids are loving that. And for high school, sports teams are doing great. I don't know what's happening this year, but we're on a pretty good winning streak for a lot of those teams. And also around the board, everyone's excited for the early release tomorrow, so thumbs up for that. I don't know if Millie has anything else, but she's excited for early release too. I know that.
Excited for early release. I don't, I think that's pretty much it. I don't know. It's been pretty good, I think, so far. People are getting involved, like you said, with the student council thing, so yeah, I think it's gone pretty well so far.
Yeah. I think we'll definitely have some like more personalized opinions next time. It's after school's been in for just a little bit longer, but yeah, that's it.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for me? No? Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have the vote to approve the DECA trips for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year, and we will turn it over to Ms. Scott.
Yeah, Ms. Veronica's on, and I think I saw someone else too. Oh, Ms. Pilat is there as well. They're both on the screen, so I'm going to turn it over to them for their quick review. And as we started a couple of years ago, it's one vote for the entire thing that you're approving. Go ahead, ladies.
Hi, so we are looking for your approval for our trips for this year. So far, we have the DECA Power Trip, which is taking place in Boston this year, November nineteenth to twenty first. That is optional for our students to attend. Not everyone, it's not a competition, that's just networking, learning labs, competition prep, and then college and career exhibits. Then our competitive events are districts. We're looking at probably Hyannis again, January sixth to seventh or January thirteenth to fourteenth. States at the Marriott Copley and Heinz Convention Center in Boston again, March tenth through twelfth. And the international conference this year is in Atlanta, April twenty third to twenty sixth. We're hopeful to have some students place for Atlanta.
And a lot of all these things are very up in the air. There are a lot of schools who are at different points here, some not allowing field trips at all, some not allowing overnight field trips. So a lot of it is very up in the air, even as far as the district conference that's concerned. It's usually an overnight trip for us, most likely not going to be an overnight trip this year, probably still going to be a two day event. But it will probably just be a, a day event and then another day event with just us going back the next day, or it may be students split, it may be some competitors one day and some competitors the next day. So there's still a lot of logistics to work out as far as what schools can do. There were a lot of, you know, there are eight other schools in our district, so we have to have some meetings to find out how, exactly how this is all going to take place. States for right now is still virtual up, I mean, still in person up in Boston. So that one is pretty much set in stone, but the district conferences are still very much up in the air as far as what's going to happen. And you know, that could change a couple of times between now and January, so.
Is anybody having any questions on this? All right, I think over the years, I've been pretty straightforward and and my, my appreciation and my fondness for DECA and the great job that, that the club does in general. Without further ado, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the DECA trips for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. So moved. Second.
Second.
We'll call vote, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas, yes. Thank you very much, guys. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, next up, we have the vote on the fall town meeting. Dr. Byer, over to you.
Thank you. As you know, Chairman of the Committee, the, each year, we have a fall town meeting. Our fall town meeting are founded on a request for six hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty four dollars. If you remember, we left the four fifty seven, eight twenty four on the table for transportation. And then we have another request for one fifty five. It's actually a request for four hundred and sixty thousand. But we have used the remaining eser, the money from S of three at a hundred and sixty five thousand and then absorbed it through all the savings and reorganization of the budget throughout the summertime, a hundred and forty thousand. So the request for the article is six, twelve, eight, twenty four, and a question vote.
This is one article for both of us.
That is correct.
Yep. Any questions on this? That's our only article.
That's our only article except for capital.
Yeah, no questions. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the article for the fall town meeting. As ready?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy?
Yeah.
And Mr. Sabas, yes. All right, next up, we're going on the capital plan.
The capital plan has been reviewed. As you know, each year, we go through this process of taking everything that's on our list. And you'll see the priorities of two hundred and thirty four thousand, I believe is the final number, as requested for the fall town meeting, which is the technology displays at a hundred and fifty thousand. The parking lot reengineering, I want to talk about briefly about that, and the athletic bus at sixty nine thousand. The rationale behind some of this is we need to take a look at our elementary parking lots, in particular, the JCS and the LGN. But because of runoff and because of all kinds of other situations, we think that we need to actually look at engineering. I'm not sure that that fifteen thousand is going to be enough. We might have to take it one school at a time, based on some of the discussions that we've had, but we'll stop there. And then if we have to come back, that'll be it. This also aligns nicely with all the other projects that we're doing. And then lastly, the, the athletic bus really is, as you know, cost savings measured long term for the district in terms of not having to use, you know, traditional buses for some of the trips that we make. And the technology displays would be for district wide. I believe that the plan is some significant changes to the middle school and then moving both directions, if you will, over time. This has been on here for at least four or five years that I can think of. So it's not a lot of requests, and these are requests that we can easily do during the fall. We don't have to wait until the spring, until the summer to do them. So we ask you for your support on our capital plan moving forward as well.
Joe, the mini buses, it says purchase, it's a mini bus, three or less, it's a lease on purchase, right?
Right. Yeah.
What's, what's the capacity on that? Because I know that's, that's the small mini buses, the old one, right?
Yeah, so these, these are, these are, I think Matt's on, he's not, I know Wade is. Yeah, Matt, is the capacity of this request, the buses, these are, what number of passengers on these buses?
Fourteen or less.
Fourteen or less, okay. I was going to say twelve, I was wrong. Thank you. And I believe that the, this was either go with the purchase of sixty nine thousand or lease it over three years.
Yeah, it is the purchase for sixty nine thousand. If we leased over three years, it would be roughly about twenty three thousand a year.
So. We're asking for a purchase game. So sometimes what happens with capital is in order for us to, to try to get something, we, we go with the lease, which traditionally one with the lease process. But in this particular case, well, it's the same money, and the other thing is these prices are just going up every single, yeah, and they're not just going up one to two percent. They're going up significantly. And we might even have to wait for this based upon what we see with transportation sales.
Now, can I get any reason why we go waits?
Right.
You're going to depreciate.
Exactly.
Okay.
I, I just have a quick question, and I might have missed the beginning of it. Did you say that the, so when the high school takes their fees, that's saved for parking lots only? Can that fix the other school's parking lot, or is that only the high school?
So everything to do with a parking lot, according to the way that was set up, like, for example, the parking fee. The parking fee can only be used for the high school parking lot. So if we want to purchase something that's going to plow that parking lot, we can get away with that. But we can't take that money and move it to the middle school or another school.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the vote, sorry, approve the capital plan.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
And Mr. Sabas is a yes. All right, we'll stay with Dr. Byer for personnel.
Just the list that you have, it's two pages of changes to staffing, either changes from positions within it or coming in as new for replacements, retirees, resignations. And then shifting, like I said earlier, that we made due to enrollment shifts and wanting to target return to school with COVID, i.e. the intervention position, which eventually, probably sometime in late October, November, we'll put a report together for you so you can see how it's intended to work. But this is all the list, this is already changed today. So just to let you know, I have never, ever, ever, in my thirteen years in super tenancy, more constant changes of personnel. And this is a, this is an issue statewide. This is not just a normal situation, just a lot of competition for the same bodies. People willing to take chances. We lost a combination of about, what, twenty five to thirty years of experience at one of our schools. Just with people literally in August resigning and, and. So that's just information.
Yeah, do we have any other positions we still need to build or changing?
We currently only have situations of long term subs. We just had someone move from a long term sub into a permanent position, meaning now we're looking for a long term sub for that position. And that's going to be a constant all year, more so, I think, than last year.
When we have a, a leave of absence, is that the whole year? Or what is the amount of time that that's listed as a leave of absence?
Yeah, it could be six weeks, eight weeks, twelve weeks, six months, the entire year. Right now, it wouldn't be, most of our leaves are going to be around that twelve weeks because it's usually connected to maternity. And then you also have sick leaves for COVID, which can last five or 10 days. So we just have a daily sub, or in some cases can go a lot longer than that.
Mrs. Stern, Carrie Rand is really good about putting the length of time next to the leave of absence. So if it's shorter than the year, she'll note that. And then she also notes if it's for the full year or not.
So since these all say school year, that means it's the whole school year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Okay, we'll watch a beat on the athletic.
Not a whole lot of information. We've been meeting. The last meeting we just had was to take a look at what they call the twenty five percent athletic complex schematic design. Basically, the two major areas that they're looking at is the sewer situation underneath the field and then the connection. And then the second issue is the area of conservation. So those are the two major areas that they continue to tweak in terms of how the field should be shifted, when should it be shifted? Where do the gates go and all of that stuff? So we, we still don't have detailed specifics. We met the other day, Sherry was there, myself, Matt, Wade, Ethan and Aaron, just to kind of give a, get an overview of like the twenty, what they call the twenty five percent kind of schematic design. So you're, you're apportioned into that process. Now, the next one is the fifty percent, and then we go to get to ninety and then go out to bid. Right now, we are still on schedule to go out to bid in March. We are still on schedule to open up those bids at that time, probably in April, by April, and shovels in around the goal of May. And be able to open, depending on which field we do first, potentially it's going to be the high school field, the Adams field would be the first replacement, potentially having that open for September. And having our first games there in the fall.
I know there was a concern about tennis courts here being unmanageable for next year, so.
Yeah, so, so the issue with the tennis courts is everything to do with the season and laying down concrete materials during the winter months. Not, not suggested at all because of what the weather can do. So the likelihood of that being available is probably the summer of, the spring of twenty three. What, like, I can see them being opened maybe by the fall, but that doesn't touch our season, it touches the benefit of anybody else who wants to use it. Okay, and as soon as the schematic design is further on, the big committee will get together, kind of give its input, then come to you for a public presentation so that we can wrap it up. I anticipate the wrap up to be, I would say, eighty five to ninety five percent. This is what we're doing, probably around the holiday season, and by holiday, I mean the Christmas holiday season, and right after the first of the year.
Joe, did we change the, the big committee meeting yet or no?
Yes, we're going to.
Okay.
I have not yet changed it, but it needs to be changed.
All right.
Because we're not going to have anything to talk about at the next meeting.
Right.
Unless we have a conflict with a lot of the members.
Right.
Okay, any other questions on the athletic complex? Okay, next up is the update on the train project.
So I'm going to turn this over to Wade Ludock, head director of facilities, because he does have some information to provide you. A timeline from train will be received by us in the next five to 10 business days. That timeline will probably include most of what's going to happen in the winter, but predominantly this spring, summer, all. Wade?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight to kind of quickly update you on where we, where we're at with the yell heat situation. So I'm going to try to share my screen here with you, put together a little slideshow. All right, hopefully you can see that.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so the yell school, this summer, we managed to get a lot done. As many of you know, the heating pipes run below the, the crawl space below the yell school. So what we're proposing to do is bring those pipes up above and run them along the ceiling. So in doing so, we, we removed boiler number two out of the boiler room. We're still running boiler one and three. They're steam, and that shows you how old these systems are. We're running steam in the old nineteen fifty one section of the building. So they're going to continue to run steam until next summer. We will pull them out and run hot water throughout the entire school. But for, for now, we're actually going to be putting a brand new boiler in it at number two, which if you look here, these are the new boilers, they're a lot smaller, a lot more energy efficient. And we're going to, we're going to be able to save a lot of space in the boiler room itself. So one new boiler has been installed. This new boiler will be providing heat for the lower section, the nineteen fifty four section of the building. We were managed to run a bunch of four inch piping. They got the section run from the boiler room down to the nurse's station. I think if many of you guys know the school, the, that's where we had a lot of our leaks last year, being the original piping. So this is, this is all brand new four inch cast iron piping and copper that'll bring us right down there. Brand new circulators will also be installed. So this will be a, a brand new heating system, really from the boiler room all the way to the back of the nineteen fifty four section. This is the pipes here. We're running them along the ceiling now, so a lot easier to maintain, a lot easier for us to get to in the future if we do have any problems. And then on the right, you'll see the finished look, all insulated up and, and it's a nice neat look. Next gen has been our plumbers, and they've done a tremendous job in, in keeping the pipes up as high as they possibly can and really provide a nice neat look for us. This is all the way down to the nurse's station here. So what we're doing is we're, we're actually going to, we're going to be coming into the nurse's station, and we're going to, we're going to, from the nurse's office down to the superintendent's office, we're going to be using the old existing pipes just for this year. And then the plan is the start of next year for us to go ahead and cut this section out and then tap into a all new piping. So when this whole project is done at the end of next summer, we'll have all brand new piping, all brand new circulators and brand new boilers, new unit events in classrooms as well. During this installation, we're lucky enough to put a bunch of new shut offs in, which will enable us to work on sections of the, of the, of the piping if we ever have problems and not, not shut down and drain the whole system in the future. There's just the, kind of the same look going down to the nurse's office. That was the, the raw pipes being laid and then the, the insulated pipes, the finished look that we have, nice new look. And then this is just, this is the quick, this is the quick timeline here. At the, at the yell school, we are going to continue to run the hybrid heating system for the upcoming heating season. So we're going to rerun in the front section, it'll be steam, the back section will be hot water and, and a lot of new pipes, new boilers and circulators going there. As Joe mentioned, we are expecting a new timeline from them, from train in the next five to 10 days. And then our water efficient flushers are starting to be installed November first, and they, they can get all them done in about a month too. So you're going to see some improvements in the, in the, the energy, gas wise, as well as, as well as water, which, as you know now, with the yell and the high school tied in, any, any little bit of water that we can save certainly saves us a lot of money on, on it going out as well. So and then we're looking to get a timeline as well on, on the, on the car, solar carports. Right now, products are really hard to find. They haven't put the order in for the carports yet. They're still working on schematics, and as soon as they get those, then they can place the order. So we're, we're moving along on things. Our main concern going into this train project was to make sure that we had heat for, for the yell school this year here. And I think, I think we're on our way there. And then just a proud grandparent moment here, I just wanted to insert my granddaughter here, just because she's so cute. And, and then as always, gives me a hard time saying that this stuff's never really fun to talk about, or, so I thought I'd give him something cute.
Well done, well done, sir.
We love it, Wade, yeah.
Any questions?
Adorable.
Beautiful.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
The, the carports, are they just at the high school or where, I forget where we're putting the solar carports?
We're going to be doing them at all five schools, which is fantastic. They're going to be carports, which is going to make parking certainly a lot easier for our staff in the, in the weather, in the sunny days as well as the snowy days. A lot easier for us to clean, clean up on the, on the snowy days as well. Plus, we're going to have EV charging stations at each location too. So as, as electric cars start coming more popular, we're going to be offering electric car port stations at each of these carport locations. So real quick, the JCS is going to be along that, kind of the back island over in front of the cafeteria section. The LGN is going to be where the, where the dumpster side of the school is. The middle school is behind where the staff parking is. The high school is going to be the, that whole big main parking lot where it's staff and students park, not the junior lot, but the, the main staff lot there. And the yell school is going to be the, again, the main parking lot out front. And, and so each school is going to have that, and that's, I can't wait for that. It's just going to be, it's such a benefit. I mean, they're, they're saying that we could, we could actually claim up to forty percent of our electricity that the schools are using right now, just with the color, with the solar carport. So and then what they give us, they give us night light throughout the parking lot areas. It's just the safety features and just, I, I, I think just aesthetically, the look of them alone is just very pleasing. So I'm really excited to get that going.
Yeah, so that you know too, we have plans to take a look at those pipes that are in the ceiling of the yell and actually converting to a drop down ceiling. As you know, that those hallway ceilings are pretty high, there are a lot of wires already there from the technology because it's an older building. But really, except for the roof at some point down the line, that building will be solid for another fifty years. I mean, it's in, it's in good shape to begin with. They need some more paint and that type of stuff for the windows, the roof. And then lastly, those ceilings and the floor tiles, those are really the last major things. Schools are, eventually are all going to have to convert with some type of electrical changes in terms of hot wiring inside the buildings because we're using so much, we're having that issue with the LG already trying to convert classrooms that need AC because of a special recommendation. Our requirement, it's almost impossible to do.
All right, any questions on, any of the train projects? Wade, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
My pleasure.
Next up, we have the opening of the school report.
Yeah, so I provided you the, the kind of, if you will, yearly bullet points that each of the principals and directors and assistant superintendent's office provide you. I won't read it, read the six pages or five pages of stuff. But in general, the major pickups this year are the traditional pickups we have, which is I cannot control traffic on one forty and one twenty three. At the start of school, one forty all of a sudden had a, had a road, road situation. At the start of school, one forty all of a sudden had a, had a road situation, we didn't know about it. We have the typical request for changes of pickups and drop-offs, many of those have been approved. We have the bus doesn't pick up my kid complaint. I think we've addressed that one finally. And a lot of that has also had to do with compliments to Bloom for giving us a workforce. And we have to be, we have to remember that every community is dealing with shortage of drivers and Bloom. Our vendor has been able, vendor partner has been able to provide us the drivers. Some of them are new, so they're learning Norton, they're learning the routes and mistakes are going to be made, but we have them, we have backups. And so far, things have been going as smoothly as you can anticipate with the start of the school year. I think the biggest issue right now that we're dealing with is the entrance ways to Norton High School in the morning. That continues to be a big problem and how to try to address that. But, and some of you know this, because you dropped off your own kids and I dropped off mine and if you're not there right at around seven twenty, you're going to be late for class for the seven thirty bell, if you will. So we're trying to see if we can make some tweaks to that in the near future. Probably going to put some people together to see if we can, and I think the students mentioned it too, see if we can find multiple avenues and ways to try to reduce while also still meeting all the requirements that we have to with the time of learning. The middle school, the Yale, the JCS, the LGN have had smooth openings as well as the high school in terms of, we are enrolling students every day. We increased enrollment today by two students. We're at, as you know, I do the October one report later, but including this choice, we're at twenty-four hundred and eighteen students. We have about, we're going to have over fifty students on homeschooling. So there's some concern there in terms of, you know, why that's happening. But again, it's a number that we're seeing stay away. So I will put that data, which is based on the October one report, you know, that we have to file with Desi formally with you next month.
Joe, the new students are moving to district orders?
Yeah, no, they're, the sign-ups right now are all move-ins. Yeah, so and a lot of that is really, as you know, the purchase of homes and home sales is a bidding war, which then causes closes clothing, closings to happen either quicker or delayed, as you know, people are buying homes without even having an inspection, buying homes with cash and then there's the, so we've had a number of families that have reached out and said, can I start on day one? I have a purchase and sales agreement, but I'm not going to move in until October first. So we've granted these families access. Yeah, it's good for the kids to be here on day one of school, so I'll provide some more details. I want to thank the staff.
Also, sorry to ask for clarification, so just to clarify, the homeschooling students are not hybrid, they're not sort of our virtual school, just to make sure that everybody understands that.
Homeschooling is a creative choice under the federal law that provides the parents to provide us a curriculum. We approve the curriculum and then we accept for itinerant services and/or student activities. The student is not a responsibility of the district.
And you said that number is about the same year over here?
Consistently, it has been this year and last year it went up and we knew that it's gone up even further this year. So I want to thank the folks that are responsible for putting all this together from the principals, assistant principals, administrators. I want to thank the staff for what I would say was in many ways a very traditional opening of school. And I want to thank the student body for always being, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of our students are respectful and kind and do the right thing and make the decisions every day, so thank you to them as well.
I did have one question regarding the high school. I did notice the doors are opening here and I know at least from experience, that does cause a little bit of a traffic jam in the junior lot because his parents that just kind of park in the drop-off lane. Is there a way to open up the building earlier or is that something?
Biggest issue with opening up the doors is your teacher report time has to be X and then that means you have a new position in the building. But I'll look into it, but I don't think we've had a change in the opening of the building time. It could be just.
It might just be like.
A lot of kids are showing up, I can tell you a lot of kids are showing up early. I started the school year because I, you know, commute into work with my daughter and I was leaving at seven to be here for like seven twenty-five, I'm now leaving at quarter seven because of the traffic, doesn't matter what street I come down, I'm going to catch the traffic.
Yeah.
But I'll look into it too.
Any other questions on the opening school? Okay, I was just going to do a general quick. Next up is any other business not reasonably anticipated? Does anybody have any?
I do, I have one. This little, we just came in. This is the US News and World Report for Norton High School. As you remember, last year for twenty-twenty-one, we were recognized as being a high school out of the eighteen thousand high schools nationwide. We are ranked at twenty-eight hundred and eighty or top sixteen percent out of all high schools in the nation. It's the first time that we actually broken into that list, if you will. And we're doing pretty well and I just think it's important to recognize the work that's coming from our staff and our students at Norton High School and that will be put up by Wade's department sometime in the week to ten days, centrally located so people can recognize the work that's happening.
It's nice to hear, very nice. Okay, I do have one thing or maybe a couple of things. At our last meeting, there was discussion about reaching out to Desi about, about, I guess I had phrased it as the idea that we would like them to remember to leave decision-making to the local level as much as possible. I did take a first stab at a letter, I'm going to hand this out to the members of the school committee to look over. No rush on it, but just give me a thought if there's something you want to tweak or whatever, pass those down if you can. And, you know, at some point we'll get it finalized. Kathy, and I'll give one to you when I, when I can.
Yeah, or you can just email it to me.
I can do that, you're right, I forgot about email. One of the hazards of being an old man like me. So again, take a look at it, feel free to mark it up if there's something you don't like or something you disagree with or something that we should really emphasize, etc. Or if someone is not aboard with it, that's fine as well, it does not have to be signed by anybody. Certainly don't make any assumptions to that effect. Okay, that does it for me, does anybody else on the board have any further?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Mr. Cameron at the Norton VFW was looking for any kids who might be interested in helping out with their Halloween event. It's October twenty-second and twenty-third, I think it's kids to dress up and scare other little kids while they're on a hayride or something. So if anyone's interested, you can reach out to the Norton VFW.
Do you want just kids or kids and adults?
No, adults, believe me, there's plenty of adults that are signing up for it too, so.
There's only a lot of fun. I think, yeah, why don't we, so, yeah, why don't you, you mentioned that as well, because that's pertinent too.
Okay, so just to kind of piggyback on what Dinesh was saying about Desi, I did was able to run into Jay Barrows, our select representative and followed up with an email to him about exactly what we talked about is allowing the local level to make decisions for our school district. So I was able to say what I needed to say. The response was. Yeah.
Political?
Yeah. Yeah, I like Jay, like Jay very much, he's become a friend, but it wasn't, it was just, yeah, I understand what you're, what you're saying. So I don't know if that's going to get me anywhere, but at least I did try.
Yep. Okay, anyone else on the board or any stretch of the, any business? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the, to the audience at large, Mrs. Goward and Wade, you're going to speak, right?
Can you just give Karen a minute, she has to move the camera?
Oh, sure.
So our audience.
I don't think the camera on me, you know that.
Hey, when you talk in front of us, that's how it goes.
With the tens of viewers at home.
Yeah. I was wanting to thank you for that update regarding Jay Barrows and the letter, I do appreciate that. I just did want to ask about the status of unmasking the Little Landshirts students. Last time we had the meeting, you guys voted unanimously.
Right.
To change the policy and I know you're going to engage in impact bargaining and you were hoping to have that completed by this meeting?
Yeah, we're actually going to go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting to discuss the impact bargaining. So it's ongoing, is what I would say.
Do you have any idea of?
I can't know until we have the dynamics backed down. And I, I get it's frustrating to hear that, but I know we understand that. We can't move forward without knowing that, there's just, so we're doing it as quickly as we can. Other than that, other than sitting down with these guys to talk to them, I can't tell you where we're going to be because I just don't know.
How long, excuse me, how long does it normally take to engage in negotiations like this over a subject?
I've been involved with one meeting and I've been involved one year. It depends on, on, impact bargaining is specific to an issue because the impact bargaining in place has to do with the membership of the union being a group of people, thirty-one, I believe, is treated differently than the remainder of its membership. So they can impact bargain on anything from the facilities itself and working conditions to what PPE we're using or not using. So that's what I would anticipate to be the guidance that I'll come forward. We have had, we have had, the labor management committee has had two meetings. So we had that decision on Thursday. The following Monday, we met, we met again this Monday, we'll meet again this coming Monday.
I appreciate that update.
I'll go into the executive session tonight with the school committee, provide them an update of those discussions. We will continue, they'll give feedback, if you will. We meet again on Monday, December twenty-seventh. I think the only day we don't have scheduled is the holiday on the Monday. Right now, we're scheduled to meet every single Monday. It would be a Zoom, we do it right after school hours and we meet on average anywhere from an hour to two hours.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Because it's a singular issue, I would like to think, and I don't want to overpromise something, but because it's a singular issue, I'd like to think that it will be done fairly expeditiously. I probably was overzealous when I thought we'd be done by now, but I don't, I don't, I don't have a reason to anticipate that it will take a lot longer, if that helps you.
Yeah, that's good, just when you made a comment of, Mr. Dr. Bier, of you saying sometimes, obviously depends on the issue, but sometimes it has taken a year, hearing that.
I'm just being truthful.
No, I appreciate that.
But in my last district, I went to arbitration on an issue. We met for six months, couldn't agree and the two sides decided to go to arbitration to settle it and then the arbitration took another five, six months.
Yeah.
It's typically on an issue like this, it's typically a discussion around the health and safety of the adults in relation to the changing working conditions. So the typical things that you see are what's available, do we agree on that? What are the questions, do we agree on that? Exchanging of a lot of information is usually the other part, that's already happening right now. Exchange of information, request for information, much of it actually could be, it's in negotiations, but you know, it's reports on air quality, reports on, you know, air exchanges, reports on how much have we spent on this, that and everything else or masking or gloves or any of that stuff. Most of that is just go grab a file somewhere, either on the computer or in a cabinet and exchange the information. My, my, I hate to say, the management side, the school committee side is kind of in a, you know, we don't have a lot of anything except to abide by the policy that they've established. So my only thing is to say to the other side, to the association and its members, this is the policy that the school committee is voting pending on impact bargaining, so how do we get there? You know, and typically, again, we've impact bargained in one meeting in Norton since I've been here and I've impact bargained over a couple of months on an issue. So that's just to be honest, that's the way it goes, I can't guarantee, but we are meeting regularly.
Right, I'm sorry, did you say those were, those meetings were available to watch on Zoom or?
No, they're not, the impact bargaining is like regular negotiations.
Okay.
They, the only group that can actually ask for it to be public is actually the union under label law. Management doesn't have the right to say that it's a public meeting. But I expect that we would be updating the school committee on a regular basis because the final say is going to be between the union leadership and the school committee on what's agreed to.
Okay, alright, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, any other business to come for the school? Do we have anybody? Okay, then I would extend a motion to adjourn, to go into executive session for purposes of contract negotiations.
And not to resume.
And not to resume, sorry.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Goward?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Sheeby?
Yes.
And Mr. Savas is a yes, thank you very much. Oh, before we do that very quickly, our next meeting is going to be Thursday, October fourteenth. And do we have a location for that yet?
That's probably going to be here too.
Okay, are we doing the?
Right now, we're not, right now, we haven't decided to do that, but we're open to do that if that's what the committee wants.
Okay, we can, we can talk about that, alright, thank you, goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight, everybody!